Time is now six thirty-two. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board for May twenty-eighth. If you will, please pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have Joe DeSenz over and forward. Joe is going to do his certification, but before he does, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there was various churches in our town are doing a lot of good things, working together and individually and all that, and I believe you guys are involved in the mobile food pantry. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we do that once a month. We've been doing that since July of last year, and we feed anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty families, which represent upwards of three hundred to three hundred and fifty people. So, that happened today, and we have another one on January.
So, is it the second, third, when is that?
It's really kind of random. We work at the Northern Illinois Food Bank and Catholic Charities to kind of schedule those, so it is a little bit month-to-month.
So, are there prerequisites for people to be able to participate in it at all?
Well, we just ask for an ID, and we ask a little bit about their family in terms of, just so we know how many people we feed, and that's all kind of the Northern Illinois Food Bank kind of protocol, so there really is, there's people that come from all over this area, so it's great.
Thank you.
Sure. Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, and we take pause to praise you as the Lord over everything and over all the communities and the families that are represented and the towns of Moni and village of Moni, and Lord, we just, we thank you, Lord, for being Lord of it all and for understanding and knowing what the future holds and what our hopes and dreams may be, and we thank you for being in control of all of that. And Lord, we just ask that for all of our shortcomings and our failures, and we know too well how we fall short on a daily basis, and Lord, we look to you for redemption, for our salvation, and for guidance and for that love and that grace that you provide to us. And so, Lord, we ask that you provide tonight a really heavy dose of wisdom and knowledge, cooperation, and just an ability to work together to see good things happen in this area. And so, Lord, we yield this meeting to you. We ask you to go before us and that you would be the person in the room that may be not seen, but may be guiding and directing the thoughts and the decisions that are made tonight, and Lord, we know that as we put it in your hands, that you are a good God, and we can trust you with our lives, with our communities, with our families, and we thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, at this time, we have open the public agenda items only.
Trustee Gonzalez, Gray, Holston, here, Horne, here, Pop, here, and Raisik.
Okay. Can I proceed? Okay. Open the public agenda items only. Let me count us in three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address. Okay. Under IMF, we have consent agenda.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of bills, may I?
Sure. Do we want to approve the consent agenda of the bills, or do you want to just commit?
Do you want to pull that?
Do you want to pull the bills right now?
Sure.
Okay.
I have, under ComEd, fifty-seven oh-three Court Street, which is one ninety-two-three dash four, five thousand one hundred and seventy-seven.
John, sorry.
ComEd's bill, which is bill number, we'll get back to it, here, one nine oh-two-three dash four, for three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Now, this is a monthly bill, I understand, and I'm wondering why it's so high.
Okay, and I'll have Superintendent Cruzell address if, if you would.
Trustee Pop, that was entered in error. It is not the correct amount, and I believe it's coming off of the work list, and it's going to be corrected, and you'll see that reflected on that work list.
So, it'll only be five thousand, then, or?
It's a pump station, but it doesn't, it's not that high.
Okay, and then I have one other one. Dispatching for twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That's East County.
That's our standard monthly fee, trustee Pop.
That's a standard amount?
Yes, it's actually less than last year because we drew a little bit.
Are you surprised by the amount?
Every month, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on those, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Raisik and then Horne. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yeah.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay.
Is any of this included?
Yes, everything is included. Mr. Adrian, do you have anything for the press report?
Under the mayor's agenda, item H, Mr. Batista, could you give us an update on where we stand on the phone system considerations?
So far, we've reached out to four different companies to give proposals. We've met with two. They've come here and given us demonstrations. We've received their proposals. We have two more set up for next week, so we're not there yet, but it looks pretty good so far. We'll be able to, our bill will be less than what we're paying now and actually be given more service and equipment.
Okay. Pledge.
Any other question? Are we nearing the end of a contract or maintenance contract with our present phone system?
Yes. June first, we've called in, our contract ends.
It's probably a month, five months after that, so we want to move this along, but we don't want to make a rash decision. It's going to cost us for the next three to five years, or the next contract might be, so.
So, we'll be leasing equipment as well, so?
That is certain. All those are going to be considerations, from what I understand.
That is correct. Yes. There's several options that we'll be able to provide to the board for discussion. The equipment or holding on to the equipment we have, just keep in mind it's outdated. The company that manufactured the equipment is no longer in business, so there's some options that we can do, but we're still.
One of the providers, I believe, was offering us the handsets. I think it seemed like the handsets were going to be at low cost with a contract for the carrier service at the same time. It was actually going to be new equipment, but no, but a decrease in our monthly bill besides. Others are considering other options to find a way to diffuse the cost of the equipment over time and so have it monthly to be lower than what we're currently paying is what the goal is.
This digital, digital plus analog?
Or voice, or whatever the case may be. They're all providing various options.
We do want to do an upgrade, just so that the board is aware of what we're looking at for our conference room, is to have a device in there, so if we had a conference call, we're able to call out or have someone call in. We're essentially located on a table. We can have multiple callers call in. From time to time, we are conducting meetings during the day-to-day operations where we're pulling a phone from, they're just poor quality, several issues, but, so we are looking at upgrading a few of the items.
When was the system that we have now, when was that purchased?
The Nortel system, the equipment that we currently have, I think the business went bankrupt or receivership or something.
Two thousand and nine is when it went bankrupt, but.
When did we purchase this system?
I can't, I don't see any record of it.
Probably under cackle, I'm guessing, because it was here when O'Donnell was here. Chief, you're, 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 you got the longest hair of the year.
Probably two thousand and one started that particular equipment.
Because I know they tried another venture for a while that failed, and they reverted back to previous, which is what we still have now. And that was, I think.
Yeah, we installed T-one lines into their software IP, and at that particular point, it wasn't compatible with what we were doing.
So, right.
So, the T-one lines came off.
And we reverted back to the Nortels.
Probably, yeah.
I'm guessing fifteen to twenty years probably to actually use this equipment itself.
The Nortel equipment in particular, I know it was two thousand and one.
Okay.
The system, the system itself, it's an AT&T based system, and that's been here for as long as it's been here.
Do we have to work that out?
Item number two, Mr. Batista, do you want to deal with the Eagle Fair Storm, or is it Mr. Cruzell?
Per your direction at the last meeting about the Eagle Fair Stormwater Outfall Project, you had asked me to bring it to another administrator for review or another engineering firm, I apologize, to, for review. I did do that, brought it to Vanage Point Engineering. They came up with the same analysis that Tech Three had with a few slight different angles at it, with keeping the cost roughly the same at doing the project, so as we kind of had thought before, it looks like everything's in line to proceed with that project, and this is available for review if anybody would like it. It wasn't closed in the packet just because it was a review request, and if you guys, anybody wants to see the validity of the review, it was done, it was fine, and I just want to be able to proceed with that project.
Was that, particularly that particular project there, was it approved, contingent on confirmation?
That was the way I had took it, sir, so that's the way I did it, providing that we didn't exceed, I think, five thousand dollars off the, you know, that additional, additional five thousand.
And there was a variation in, I think, what trustee Olson said.
So, and that came up to about five thousand dollars. We did not exceed that, and there are estimates of approvals of that, so to keep it along with the same engineering firm to complete this project, I would like to just move forward.
Trustee Olson, please.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. I think it's important, again, that we give at least two opinions on these type of projects, but that being the case, I think we should go ahead and remove, according.
And use the original engineering firm?
Use the original engineering.
I know there was some discussion, just kind of aside up there, whether you are going to look into, I know we're going to look into, the other item with the same firm.
Separate issue.
I know, but it's same firm.
Separate issue, but same firm.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cruzell, if you would, I don't know if it's you or Mr. Batista that are going to deal with you, Egyptian Trail, says.
Just for an update, Superintendent Cruzell and I met with two firms last week and provided the report that we received from the original engineering firm. Everything has been handed over to now to prospective engineering firms, additional firms to review the project, and hopefully we'll have a response in the next week or so.
So, by the next meeting?
Yes, by the next board meeting. Yes, they've been given marching orders, they have it prior.
Question, who are the two firms that we talked to?
Barnesworth Engineering and Vanage Point.
And the original one was Robinson, and this is a follow-up to the Tech Three?
Correct, so that you asked, that's correct.
Yeah, the, other than the first one that we had our issues with, and I don't want to rehash all that, the other three are all Ida approved.
Robinson, Barnesworth, Vangepoint.
All Ida approved. The first one that we dealt with was not.
And also, just to add additional note, I have been in close communication with Ida, so they are aware, they had a meeting today, they were updated of our status.
And they've been helpful with?
Very helpful with us and in guidance and, as well as Will County Highway.
Thank you. Mr. Batista, I live here also addressing item number four.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Was there any kind of a resolution, or is Will County still discussing the possibility of any help, I'll use that word, with the drain system for the Egyptian Trail project?
It'd be a variance if I understood correctly, and that'll have to wait until we actually give a solid direction from an engineering firm of choice pertaining to what we have to do. We actually have to present our argument to the Stormwater Management Committee, and that's what I'm going to decide whether they're going, and it's a committee that will actually decide that variance, if I would, pretty much.
It goes through a process, it's sort of, yes.
It's got to follow procedures, the point.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four, the, there's a discussion or approval of a six-month extension for a sign, going through the minutes, a couple of us were here previously when this was approved. This is referring to the real estate signs on the corner of Industrial and Governor Sideway that is, I'm referencing Kathy Dickinson's property. I know she had a sign there promoting her going out business sale, and then she had a, sorry.
I might want to help.
That's fine, you were called yet.
Okay.
Sorry. So, Kathy Dickinson's property, and then she had through her real estate agent come forward and requested a temporary real estate sign to help her move the property, which were all in favor of helping her businesses and moving to real estate so it can be put into productive hands and all that, but that was, if you court pile had gone through and trying to identify the original date of that, and while it's not supposed to have been temporary, it's been there now for in excess of what we anticipated it to be. They're asking now for a, an additional six months from this point in time. Mr. Batista, what is your input on this, and do you want the realtor to head forward?
Easy, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you very much for, well, I mean, here, I didn't need to jump ahead of you. I do have letters here, would you like me to pass them out?
Sure.
I'm obviously here representing Kathy Dickinson, one of your property owners in town, six-zero-two-five Industrial Drive. I have the property listed for sale, and obviously, when this all started and that sign went up, we're hopeful that we would draw a client in, and we have had some activity on the property, and actually, some activity has come off the sign. There's a few people that we're seriously talking to on the property. There's some financing situations that they're working through right now, but I can't say that it's anything very, very, very solid.
Sure.
Hopefully, maybe something will come out of it, but at this point, I can't assure that. We're looking for an additional six months on that. Hopefully, we don't need six months and it'll be sold. That's the ultimate goal, but we went through a pretty rough winter where there was virtually no activity at all. So, I, I did have, that sign is on private property. I did have the permission of Mr. Halapopolis, I believe it is.
Sure.
I may not be saying it perfectly, but in any case, we're requesting a six-month extension on it.
Trustees, questions, comments?
Why only six months?
Why only six months? I'm trying to be optimistic here. I'd rather not tell you a year. I'd rather just tell you six months, and then hopefully it's down sooner than.
Six months, the last time you had it sell.
That's correct. We're in a commercial property situation here, and we don't have a wonderful commercial property market.
No, that's why I'm wondering, six months seems awfully short, and I don't know why we looked at this for twelve months, and hopefully it'll sell before that, but this is commercial property, it doesn't sell fast.
It doesn't sell fast, and if you want to give me twelve months, I'm more than happy to take it. I'm just trying to be, you know, reasonable.
And I'm glad that the sign is out there and you're getting some movement for it, but you, you as a marketing director, what else are you doing to help?
Oh, the property is also listed on CoStar, it's listed on Loop Then, it's listed in the MLS. I've spent thousands of dollars in direct mail on it, you know, phone calls, so on and so forth.
Is it, is there a room on the website yet to put commercial?
We're endeavoring to try to gather through our building department, the, a list of all properties, be it vacant property, like empty mill buildings or buildings that are vacant and all that. We don't yet have the gathering of all that information done at this point. Hopefully, if you have a summer intern or part plan or something, I'd actually help gather some of that information, it'd be great, but that's our goal for economic development is to partner with all the property owners and such.
I do that with some villages. It's a pretty daunting task on the village because of the, you know, the upkeep of that site, they have valid and qualified information on it, but.
But you said you've done it, and you probably have it on this property, so that was my new ways of presenting, so thank you.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and do, but I think it should be twelve months, not for six. I think we want to be proactive, and this is a nice message to send. So, three, you'd be happy.
I would say.
Okay. Any further discussion? One of the things I do want to address is the fact that we have property owners, businesses that are down that street specifically, and we've discussed in the past through planting zoning, I know it's kind of still in their realm, the need to have, was technically considered off-site signage. I've been very impressed when I drove down to Manteno recently, and I saw the way they do their signage, directing people to the businesses, but I think we really need to consider a way to help our businesses that are off the main routes, Monument Side or something like that, in certain areas, that they're not plazas or whatever else, but you can identify, be it World Kitchen, be it Animal Wellness, or whatever the businesses are that are down the street that wouldn't otherwise be noticed, and that might also help eliminate some of the other issues you run into where you need to put these temporary signs to, to deal with some of those issues. So, I just want to address that. We do need to work towards that, and I'm open to suggestions on that. I do like what Manteno does it. Unfortunately, at the speed at which people driving past that particular area, a little sign about this wide wouldn't do a whole lot, so. We got a motion and a second. Kirk, has you got both of those done?
Is this for Paulus?
That's what it was presented. Is it Holston and then Pop? Okay. Any further discussion?
Okay, roll call, please. Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And we have a whole series of ordinances under the attorney's report and follow-up to the, I'm sorry.
Just really quickly, two of us were missing ice six out of our packet. Can you have a list of ice six?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Michelle, could you, you wanted me to do any of that?
I can just, I jumped ahead here a little bit. I have two other things under the mayor's agenda that aren't on there, we're not going to vote on tonight, or is it your turn?
And that is, at the last meeting, I mean, discussed, the assignment, trustee assignments for particular departments. I've heard from some of the trustees, I asked if all of you contacted me in the last of the weeks. I'm going to extend that to the next meeting if we can, because I know we've all been busy, and I, you know, and just in kind of reviewing this, and I want to make sure we're all, you know, getting engaged in the various departments, I don't really, I don't know the best way to put it, so I'll be quite honest. I think it's important to have trustees fully engaged with a department to be a liaison with the department. I also think it's important to perhaps change that periodically. Now, I don't mean like every three months or whatever like that, but, and I was talking to Daryl, our finance director today, and even the issue like, the person that's the finance trustee, which trustee Horne has been filling that void by board approval about a year ago, is, you know, that person needs to be readily available here at daytime to sign checks if necessary, but, again, on holidays, I think, you know, trustee Holston's been doing a fine job of reporting on economic development. I think it's important, perhaps annually, to change those, so maybe a trustee would work with the department through the budget approval process, and then the new assignment would be given, and they work with another department through the next year's cycle, and that would give each trustee an opportunity to, and again, we're just trying to figure the best way to do some of this, and committees, I didn't feel like were really effective, but, so, I need your feedback. I'm not going to dictate where you guys are going to serve. I might have recommendations for the first time through, but bottom line, it's your choices, and I want to hear your input, where you want to be, and so, but realize this, we probably will be in the process of changing that power work in an annual. That way, because if you're having to change a sign around, things like the finances, for example, you know, that can get kind of gnarly if you're changing that, like all signature cards and everything else, so. Besides that, it takes you a while to adapt on the independent department.
I was going to say that economic development, for example, I'm against one year because one year you're barely getting started. When you start working with all the different committees on the county level, that you have to work with township level and everything else.
I understand, but even at that, it's still, I think it's good for all of us to have some exposure in each of the areas, so that not one person becomes the, I won't say bottleneck, but the floodgate or whatever you call it for all the things that go on in that particular department, so, and it gives each person an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the village, what's going on in the individual department, so if you will, if you don't mind, just think about a department that you feel like would be good for you to work with this first year. It doesn't necessarily have to be something you're, you have an expertise in, but, you know, because ultimately, staying with the cycle long enough, you're going to go through each department at some point or another, so, that's just probably a good way.
And what departments, what are you thinking?
I've thought about some of them, like economic development is an example, doesn't really have an department per se. I think it should, but it doesn't, so it's kind of an anomaly, if you will.
Buildings, right?
Yeah, you've got finance, you know, typically, if you look back to how ordinance, the committees used to be defined, it used to be finance, ordinance, and licensing, used to be one, you say have.
Public recreation.
Yeah.
Kind of works.
Right, so, and then like even like the idea of like the police committee, we actually have a police commission, which is involved in disciplinary hiring practices, which, that's my statute, we have to have that. We have police pension of the view board, so we have those things, so it's really more of a matter of identifying the day-to-day operations of some of those. Public works, you can almost split public works into a couple levels because of, you got water, which is its own animal, and you have roads and bridges, you've got, or you can just simply say public works. Building Department, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, and right now, we only have one person working in that department, so. Building Department, coenforcement are kind of running together, obviously, but some of the things we've been talking about, trying to gather from Building Department would be information, like we talked about with the real estate agent here, you know. The more we can gather, the more useful to help us partner with our businesses, property owners and managers, the better we can serve the community. So, I'm going to leave it up to you guys. Kind of tell me what you think, you know, it doesn't mean we, you know, I want feedback from you guys, so if you have that opportunity to get in touch with me sometime in the next week or two, I'd be really appreciative to hear where you'd like to see us go with this thing, and once we have a little more information, we can move forward. Additionally, this is May, and by ordinance, some of the management team are required to be reappointed, so I'm just stating right now that. So, I'm just stating right now that that is something we need to address, as well as salaries for our management. So, even though we don't actually have a budget approved for this year, I think it's reasonable to identify what our salary expectations are going to be for those department heads that we have currently, and the reappointment of the department heads, or not, in some cases. So, then that's going to be up to you guys to help me with that. So, as we meet in the next week or two, I'd be appreciative to have the opportunity to talk with you. It should be about your perspectives on some things, and so we can move together. And at this point, I'll refer to the attorney for a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor. Six ordinances for the board review. The first ordinance is entitled ordinance establishing administrative fee billing cycles for utility users, set forth where there'd be a fifty cent per billing cycle, assessed for utility services with a five percent increase each and every year thereafter. I believe we talked about this in the previous board meeting. It's up for the board review.
And I believe these were all presented at last meeting, and they were illustrated by the sample that was provided, where there was a painted blue illustration of the water bills and the current and proposed. And we'd asked the attorney to rework the ordinances to match the illustrations, and that's what was done on the next four, five of this year, four or five years of this year. So...
I could just make a comment.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
H.R. Bill 3080, the federal government level Water Resources Development Act is on the president's desk right now for signature. That bill, on a national level, was approved by a vote of ninety-seven to one. It's about infrastructure, and I think what we talked about for those that weren't at the last meeting was infrastructure. We've got to begin to develop some revenue for the infrastructure of Moni. We've had, even in the last week, two water breaks. Three within the last month, I believe. Unless we address the infrastructure, unless we begin to address that, we're asking for trouble down the road. I noticed there was something on our packet about Aqua and their pending increase. Since this meeting, I've talked to several other villages that have other significant increases, in some cases even doubling. Unfortunately, this is not enough. What we're asking for here is just really pittance to what we need to do over the next ten years, but it is a start, and I understand the concern with some people about any kind of an increase. But unless we begin to address our infrastructure of roads, and in this case, water, we're going to have a very hard time with economic development, whether economic development includes residential or industrial, doesn't want to make any difference, we've got to have the infrastructure.
And I do want to address, you brought up about the Aqua increase that was put in your package. Superintendent Grzel provided that to you based on his research and staying on top of things. That is not yet been passed, I don't believe. They're proposing that. Just so you know, I talked to somebody who lives in unincorporated Green Garden Township in Canterbury, South Village over there. Their water bill for eight thousand gallons for, was a hundred and twenty dollars, and that's just water and sanitary. That's not trash, that's not any of the other things that go into it, and they're going to increase that by another nine percent. So, we're still below what even our neighbors are charging in a lot of those regards. So, I know this is not easy to stomach, but it's, as Trustee Holston brought up, we're starting to cover some, I mean, it's a tough call, but...
With that, I move for approval.
So, I needed more than some of that, please?
Sixteen eighty.
Sixteen what?
One, six, eight, zero. And so that was Holston and Gray of Little Osprey? And then you roll call on it, please?
Coste, Horn? Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
Okay. And then Saber Gerg, you have the next item?
Yes, sir. The next item, Mayor, is ordinance amendment title eight, chapter one, six of A, of the village code, the change in the water rates. I believe we discussed this in the previous meeting. The rates are set forth in eight, one, six, A, with a minimum charge and then the regular rate, and these rates would be increased by five percent per year. It's up for the board's review of consideration.
I understand motion to approve. Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Marizic? Or something?
Yeah, sixteen eighty-one.
Okay, here for local.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yeah.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is ordinance amendment title eight, chapter two A, section one C. This is increasing our capital costs and maintenance by five percent per year, starting January first, two thousand fifteen.
January first or May first?
Since January.
I think we're in March, two thousand fifteen.
You don't want to go May.
And I believe this should all be triggered for May first, because that's our billing cycles for, just making sure.
It'll be May first, two thousand fifteen.
Because it wanted to trigger to be all the time.
Well, this is two thousand fifteen, so we're going.
Correct. No, that's correct. We're leaving a place for this year. Is that one year?
Yes.
There's two of them that were like that. They're not going to be changed this year, but there'll be a five percent increase the next year, those all. The tributaries on all these will be May first. I understand motion to approve.
Holdup.
Fire.
Holston and Raisik, ordinance number?
Sixteen eighty-two.
Start to figure this out. Roll call please.
Coste, Raisik?
Yeah.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance amendment title eight, chapter two A, section one D, of the village code, increasing the sewer and waste water fees by five percent. We would have to amend it as we did with the previous one, effective May first, two thousand fifteen.
I understand motion to approve, item number four. Holdup.
Second.
Gray, Gray, Horn, yes, sir.
The sewer waste, isn't that what we are wholly behind on, intent?
Yes, sir.
We are looking for a five percent increase.
Starting next year. We're going to adhere to the ordinance that was passed seventeen years ago and actually implement according to that, but we're going to set a five percent increase for subsequent years.
I'm sorry.
If you recall, we're only charging half of what we're supposed to be charging by the ordinance.
Ninety-seven or ninety?
Ninety-eight, seventy, or whatever it was. Whereas that was the biggest portion of the increase for this water bill, and instead of stepping it up for this year any more than what was already voted and approved under...
Ordinance nine, six, three?
Nine, six, three. We're merely implementing that for the first year here, but then in subsequent years, it'll also get that five percent increase. That'll help us, but it still won't keep us, you know, still won't catch us up, but it's just, but it's a step in the right direction.
Well, just roughly, with all these ordinances we're changing for one particular bill, well, we're...
Sure.
How much of an increase are we talking?
Roughly nine dollars.
Nine dollars?
Roughly twenty percent.
I think that's more than reasonable for that.
And it's still cost competitive with surrounding communities. And I think that's particularly, if I recall correctly, that we, because of not implementing it and passed correctly for charges to the customers, we theoretically could have lost nearly two point six million dollars on that. So, we're just going to implement according to the ordinance for now, no one will approve, so. I believe we have a motion and a second on that. Is it Gray and Horn or...
Coste, Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
I believe that's ordinance number sixteen eighty-three. And the next one, where if you want to, I don't care if we go on this at this time, the board wants to take a little time to adjust this and think about it, but...
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I was asked to review our draft ordinance pertaining to transient merchants. I tried to define transient merchant for the board's review of consideration under section two, also akin to vendor and peddler. Basically, what this would do, some villages outlaw these completely, others charge a little higher license fee. I left the license fee part blank for the board's consideration. It's just up for the board's, not to take action on it tonight, but basically, it's something for the board to review and consider. License fee, again, I left blank because I'm not sure of how much of fee we're looking at. But other than that, it's for the board's consideration. I did take a look at other villages. Very large villages are local, they have pretty tight stringent standards. And again, some villages outlaw these type of transact, type of merchants completely, others have a higher license fee. So, it's up for the board's consideration.
I think Mr. Bautista and you would talk to the chief about this as well. Do either of you want to voice in on something?
We have like a specific instance, something happened here while we needed to...
In the last month, we had like ice cream trucks driving around that are, don't even comply with local, they don't even have local kind of permits. So, they're out there peddling, ice cream is one thing, it's not a big deal necessarily, but you have meat vendors, you've got Kirby salesmen, you've got whatever else you're doing, you've got solicitors permits, but none of these are being required to prove they're even charging all the sales tax or anything else. And since they're competing with the brick and mortar businesses in town that are invested in our community, providing jobs to our community, things of that sort, but you've got other businesses that come in, fly in, that do business on our city streets. And they're not required to comply with any expectation for sales tax, revenue, they're not, you know, and they haven't necessarily been being policed regarding, even health department permitting and things of that sort. I believe both the ice cream trucks and your officers did that.
Typically, if we get a complaint about somebody being in a neighborhood, we're going to go check. And in almost every circumstance that we do that, we're going to find that they either haven't come in for a solicitor's permit if they're actually going door to door, or in the case of the ice cream truck or the meat sales truck, which by the way, that's really a bad thing to buy. Really bad.
Have you ever tried to shmanus?
No.
No.
It's like, it pulls up in your driveway with a black pickup truck and a refrigerator in the back. Yes, probably not the way to buy your steaks, but those typically aren't compliant with health department laws, nor are they compliant with collecting sales tax for any of these. And ice cream trucks are generally circulated out of one location. Sometimes there's a company in the Heights area that, you know, has dozens and dozens of trucks. Maybe they send one driver one day and maybe another driver another day, you know, it'll vary from day to day about who can actually be there. It's a difficult thing to try to set up some sort of pre-arranged way to determine that if you need a business license, we're trying to be fair with everybody, and normally the spot checks happen afterwards. If they encourage them to pay a very high fee ahead of time, we may encourage them not to actually come here and be spotted. Essentially.
So, you did have some specific instances that...
Yes, we do every year. It's not a, it's not a new thing for us. You know, we do do this every year. The ice cream trucks in particular this year, it went twice with two of us.
And neither of them had current county permits. And the county has, because I talked to, I don't know if you know Jimbal out of Maquo, his wife Elizabeth, who's one of the IRS and the local county health department, I talked to her, and found out what are the things they actually look for. And if you're curious, no matter where you're at, they are actually required to have a sticker on the rear bumper of the vehicle identifying the year that they are current for not for the local license. They're also required to periodically prove who their distributors are, they're buying from, not just going to GFS, but a licensed wholesale distributor of some sort for their products that they're dealing with. Same thing would be for the meat vendors, if you dare.
Generally speaking, when the health department does an inspection like that, they're actually testing for refrigerator temperatures, and those need to be below forty degrees in order for the meat to be stable. And I can guarantee you that, you know, I've seen the trucks with the refrigerator doors open long enough, that's somewhere near forty degrees. So, you know, ice cream melts, you can kind of figure out for yourself whether something's good or bad. Meat, that's a whole different story.
But it was a good deal.
Yeah, it was a good deal, but you spent the rest of the afternoon somewhere, you didn't find it. So, I guess the question comes in here is, we had allowed some of the, and here's, and last year is an example. We had an ice cream truck came in last year, we didn't confirm that they were abiding by federal, state, or other local, you know, policies, regulations. And one ice cream truck came in and got a business license, even though it wasn't a local business, so it wasn't, didn't really fit the correct paperwork for that. Another one came and had a contractor's license. You know, I find out about this, you know, just in reviewing what happened. And so, it wasn't even consistent in regards. You know, the suggestion was put out that you charge a thousand dollars for a transit business license, and it's applicable to the individual and the vehicle, and you put, much like we have in our vending machines, you have a little village sticker that's got a date stamp on it. We would implement something of the same sort, maybe use a vending machine sticker, and apply that to the rear bumper of the vehicles, you know, in that business. And the second thing was, if somebody's selling a Kirby vacuum, it's a thousand dollars, I'm not using it as an example. You know, they're selling here, sales tax ought to be charged locally here, because that's where they're doing the transactions at. So, if somebody's coming into town, they're selling, in the past, we've done solicitors permits. If they're selling product door to door, again, they still would need to abide by, whether it's some encyclopedias or some advice anymore, but, you know, whatever the business model is, if they're selling a product, they'd have to get a transit business license in lieu of achieving. I believe this would actually take the place of a solicitor's license.
I would suggest that we maintain a solicitor's license only because some people will come here.
For service related?
Right, correct, and do not actually sell product or selling services first, but it's a...
Two of them I need to amend that, in order to describe that as being like a solicitor's permit might be for services more than products. Like Comcast, you can mention, you have, that comes in all the time for that.
And when we sign, when we sign that for energy agreements, those companies come in, this is supposed to be people for who might want to be the next person to buy your electric from.
Sure.
That kind of thing.
So, we're looking to the board to digest this a little bit, and perhaps if you have input while we meet in the next week or two here, if you want to...
I looked up a couple of...
Yes, sir.
A little bit a couple days ago. Section six, exceptions. After the discussion, we just had any person selling vegetables, fruit, or other perishable, which farm products, had established village market or a location on the private property of a consenting owner.
Okay.
Wouldn't you get just as sick with vegetables and perishable farm products?
I think in that situation...
Would you leave, by the way?
I believe, based on the extent, because you brought up some of this from other towns that you're doing, and...
Yes.
Well, I'm assuming you said, because I...
Absolutely. I'll be honest.
Well, but in the event that somebody's going to be selling products like that, they're going to get a local business license, because they are physically plant oriented, at a location in our town for an event, you know, or a series of days, or whatever the case may be. And so, that'd be like, we have a farmer's market, and you have a craft market, or whatever kind of thing like that. If they're coming in, they're going to buy a license based on the fact that they're in a particular location, and that's, that would be a business license or something of that sort for that type of purpose, like when Baderman was doing the farm stand last year.
I was thinking, Trustee Holston, is that, there's a couple large companies in Earlton Park in Frankfurt that sell the fruit, and they're for fifty or sixty years, I believe. And I didn't think of a provision, you know, if it was bad fruit, what we would do, but they consistently for, again, fifty years, since April through October, they sell fruit vegetables, they worked off this ordinance, but I didn't think of it.
Well, and I'm very interested in having something along the line. For example, New Lenox has a French market every Saturday, and you... Lenox has a French market every Saturday, and you can go over there and you can buy cheese or pizza and other products, or all food products, that are, and these are just local vendors, if they had to pay a thousand dollar permit, they wouldn't be doing it. So I'd be careful about running those people out.
But it does say other location on the private property of a consenting owner, so in the case of, you know, Mr. Baderman or something, that it's in technically his property or the property owner gave them permission to do so.
And just to clarify, we are not joining forces with the Senator in Springfield, is trying to regulate limousines if you're the strike areas.
I didn't.
I don't know, just because some of you are probably watching the news, you know, I'm not saying that.
I didn't.
No, I know you weren't. No, I didn't. But I was just thinking about, some of you are aware of what's going on in Springfield, and there's legislation pending to try to prohibit.
Or churches that sell picnic goods, have their Oktoberfest and sell things.
They have a physical presence, they are, as part of the operations of their organization. This has to do with people that don't have a physical or everyday presence in the village of money. That's what this is pretending to be.
Either they don't live and only.
Well, their, their physical location is not established yet. They're not hiring locally, they're not whatever else in the contingency area for the sales taxes for them to, let's say you give a Kirby salesman, just use an example, a license this year, for him to come back or her to come back next year and to request a, the 2015 license, they're going to have to prove that they were charging sales tax on the transactions that they had in the previous years. If not, they won't be allowed to.
We've got established merchants that aren't doing that right now.
Well, it's.
Sorry.
Yeah, right. Sorry. He was in New York.
Well, then how about, but then I wanted to go to the next item, same thing, any person's, whatever tangible personal property who is fulfilling an order for such property which was selected or placed by mail or other means, what's that?
You're describing there like Schwanz, it's merely fulfilling an order for.
Or FedEx, or.
Right.
Sharns, or home delivery, UPS.
EpiBots, I don't, we have people.
EpiBots, those are orders that are being placed.
I think the, the final line on that might come into the issue of, if Schwanz is actually coming out and taking orders while they're at the door, then technically they're doing their sales while they're here. And, and in that case, they're safer to charge a sales tax with the transaction at that point because that's where they're doing their sales. If it's only fulfilled, like EpiBots, I think is pretty much.
Because they don't recharge the sales tax.
Yeah, everything's already been dealt with and all that sort of thing. But, and I use Schwanz as kind of like one of those awkward ones, you know, they're probably of all the vendors I see on a regular basis in the area, or EpiBots or whatever else they're, you know. So I think, Larry, if we could even let her view of section six, not necessarily because by mail or other means, the other means is so big, maybe we need to say something about not placed by prior request, or, you know what I'm saying? So if they're placing the order while they're here, not getting it delivered, delivering whatever the case may be, there's got to be a way to reward that a little bit. And just to make sure, we also stipulate that, again, we're going to do that with this, we're also doing it with our special use permits and other things like, reference to all federal, state, and local regulations, needs to be restated, just because if it's a health department issue, if it's a fire department issue, we want to make sure that any special uses or things of this sort fall in this group of classifications.
Let me just check, Your Honor, on the sales tax issue, I believe. We had a few situations, I believe, sent us a few others, where it depends on where the sale took place.
Correct.
And I believe there was state legislation about that, where the sale takes place is depending with the company or the striker, with the municipality can charge a sales tax. You can't charge it.
I know we got, we, I know the village had, I'd say we have some involvement, but the village had a situation, the laws that sent us, where they were trying to use the Will County sales tax rate for transactions as compared to the Chicago location that they had their corporate offices out, because they have to have an employee who had to live here, or whatever the case may be. We're not talking about those kind of games like that, we're talking about specifically where they're coming out in a transacting business on our streets, on our sidewalks, at the door.
Actively soliciting?
Yep. Actively soliciting while they're in our town.
I have a question, attorney. So I've had people come to my door, this is usually in the summer, they're usually teenagers, sometimes from foreign countries, and they're selling magazine subscriptions, and they're trying to get a, I think, I think it's a scholarship. So, so where would that fall, or would that fall in this ordinance?
What are the selling, I mean, chief, I mean, I, I know it's kind of a, let me just, let me throw a little denominator as well, if the PTO or the Cub Scouts or whatever else, or the local organizations, kids are going out, they're technically representing nonprofit organizations, there's kind of a built-in, I just didn't do the kitchen box in there.
There is, and many of those kids that are coming out to sell those magazine subscriptions are now telling us that they're part of a religious organization, and some of these do have actual charters from a religious organization to be part of their scholarship program. So we walk a fine line with, with respect to some of the solicitors, especially to the magazines, even though they're sometimes problematic.
The less obvious ones, as long as we also want to be careful, actually, they might be scheduled in their houses, and that being the case, I'd rather have them put at the police for our solicitors. Chief, you agree?
Yes.
For background check, wherever you find necessary if you want them. So I believe we're going to have to kind of relook at the solicitor's permit in the lines where we're involved for those as well.
We'll move the table this until the next one. I'll make that motion.
So it's first by Gonzalez, second by Razor.
Mr. Gray.
Yes. Holston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Yes. Tracy, yes.
Yeah.
And trustee Gonzalez, I was not trying to imply that you were saying anything about limousines, I was just making reference of, let's go out in Springfield, it's kind of a.
Talking to you too, I'm sorry.
I said, I wasn't trying to imply that you were kind of adding to the limousines. I was merely referencing in Springfield, there's some discussion right now of trying to make it nearly possible for a kid to be an enterpriser.
And I get that, but just don't.
I wasn't, I wasn't putting you together with that. That's fine.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last item I have is the ordinance regarding the raffling. Raffles within the village have presented at the board last board meeting, I was asked to look into if we could make it subject to that organization or company to have any video poker license. I did check with probably four other prominent villages to check what their regulations are, and as far as I can tell, no one has that type of regulation. I did call the state, I did get a response, partly, partly because I was thinking about it afterwards, video poker is relatively new compared to the other situations. The board does have the right to make it more restrictive, like I mentioned before, I believe they have made pertaining to the, the amount of the tickets and, you know, the, how frequent it can be. I have not, again, I have not found in the ordinance, to be honest, where it's restricted to one type of organization. Everyone that I've seen, these prior three or four of them, what they've done is what we did basically, Mantino and a couple others, they veered the state regulations. So it's, it's really up to the board, you can make it more restrictive, the thing I am questioning is that I have not found one. I, I know for a fact what the other villages have done, which are larger than ours and probably have plenty of times more type of raffles, all they've done, just like Mantino, if you notice, they just took the exact wording from the state and put it into the village board. So it's, it's up to the board, and just indicating, I cannot find one that says it's limited to entities who have video poker licenses.
And, and trustee, who else has discussed for your, you know, after the last meeting, is, is it possible to just omit any of those?
I, I want to do that, Your Honor, because the ordinance, the statute does say if you violate it, it's a class C misdemeanor. I don't think you want to reduce the level of the penalty if the state says if you violate the state statutes, a class C misdemeanor, if you, that's one thing I would not suggest, because there's got to be some kind of religion in there, otherwise the, the ordinance got no teeth to it. And if the state says you're going to violate, and the state statute is pretty liberal, to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure you want to do that.
I know it was approved at the last meeting, pending possible changes. Was it given ordinance, one of the last meeting as well?
No, I, I don't wish so.
It was given, I thought it was.
Oh, yeah, it was sixteen seventy-eight.
So if, if you're suggesting that there's not really any way to make variations to those?
I, I just believe if we do make that type of restriction, it would be challenged, and I, I'm always, like the board knows, I check on the villages that are larger than ours, they've been at it longer than we have, and I cannot find one where it goes restricted to whether it be video poker or a bar, whatever, it just indicates, it just reflects exactly what the state does, and they probably looked into it just as much as we did. I would recommend that we sort of follow that pattern, and then, you know, I'd rather be safe and sorry.
But basically, we're trying to make it easier for local organizations to get and be good standing. Otherwise, we would address this in all that had been brought to us.
No, in fact, I think what the state statute indicates, Your Honor, as you stated, the village has the right to impose this type of disordinance, therefore, what we're trying to do is regulate it. They don't have to go to the state, they can come to the village, the village's got more control over it, the village knows who's doing what. I think it's a matter of regulation more than anything else.
I don't know. Trustee Gonzalez, are you having concerns about this?
A lot.
I understand.
And I understand the two of the villages that are larger than us that have five times or twenty times the amount of gaming licenses that we do. That being said, not trying to restrict it anymore, or just saying that there's a penalty for violation thereof, not even anywhere can we do another whereas. This is in the state statute, or trying to regulate state statute where gaming licenses are, you know, in place, in establishments where gaming licenses are in place. It's just one sentence, but it kind of gives us a little, not taking away anything of what it's trying to do is regulate and control and help them keep their licenses, but not controlling other organizations smaller and without these specific penalties being.
I, I believe we can, we could put up probably a preamble, whereas it is the board's wishes, I believe, or desire that, you know, these type of raffles are held in certain type of establishments, or it's not mandatory, but you see the board's intent. I would say the usual, the section one of every ordinance I do, the preambles are incorporated into the ordinance per se, but you can indicate it is the intent of the parties that you would like to see these raffles held at establishments with video poker, uh, video licenses, but it's, it's your desire, and it's, I mean, the board's desire. And if they all still, if they set forth the regulations and comply with it, license should be issued, but you can put up another preamble in there indicating this is the intent of the board, or desire of the board, that the majority of the raffles to be held herein would be held in establishments who have video licenses.
I'm confused, because would that not mean that Raffles or San Boniface or somebody else couldn't actually have one?
No. What I'm, what I'm trying to indicate is that you're saying you would like to be held at an establishment, which has, there's got to be.
Or that know that these statutes are intent for establishments with gaming license to preserve their gaming license.
The statute or the, of the.
This.
Of the ordinance?
The ordinance itself.
Whereas this ordinance is being, being.
Are claimed for businesses with active gaming licenses.
So, for instance, you're here to say whereas is the intent of the board to facilitate the concerns and the.
Preservation of.
Whatever of, of businesses that have, or whatever, that this ordinance is being implemented, something of that sort. And it is not the intention of the board to regulate.
Raffles, you know, because I, you know, I think, and I'll go back to the, the fire with the turkey raffle.
True.
Because, you know, or, yeah. The best selling chances that would very, barely clearly stipulate that, but they don't have any gaming license in, in danger of losing that, but they would be charged a hundred dollars a year.
No, twenty-five.
Hundred dollars a year or twenty-five per instance.
Right. And, and Ruben, I believe you, you had talked to Chief Nealon, because he called asking about the situation, and I know Chad and Lisa were here at the last meeting, they came and talked to me about the, because of football being involved, because. Right. And I know with football, they're going, so for twenty-five dollars, a hundred dollars, it makes, you know, it, it was insignificant to them either way, no matter what's going to process, but what did the fire chief say about his organization, or the section of the volunteer fire?
Just the concern of the, the amount of the fee, putting a burden on the organization itself, and so there was some discussion if maybe the, if they're, if the fee part of that, or all of it can be designated back toward that organization, was, was some of the discussion.
And I know the concern that was brought up at the last meeting had to do with the fact that just processing this is burdensome on the administration here to deal with this, because if we got to track, keep records and all this stuff, it's, you know, and I believe that's the reason why the fees are so low, is trying to make it as simple as possible, it's twenty-five dollars for a single instance, or a hundred dollars for like an annual type thing. That's because, me and Michelle, or whoever's in the front office that's having to deal with these things, their time is worth something to us.
Well, they're not required to give the license, but this actually requires the organization to report back to the village within seven days after the raffle's been completed, what the results were. So this actually is creating a lot of extra paperwork for the village.
Right. Right.
So look at page five, section nine C.
I mean, I just seem not to have it at all, but it doesn't change the fact that whether we have an ordinance or not, the state statute requires that all raffles be, be monitored and sanctioned, if you will, by a governing body, and if we're not doing it, then you got to go to county, but what we've determined is county says it's not our responsibility, you're in a municipality, Brian's place or wherever else, it's up to them to get it from us.
Well, the purpose of this was because the gaming industries in town, there are five of them, cannot have a raffle unless we have this.
Right.
On the books. That was the purpose of this. Regardless of that, however, your point is valid, it's illegal to do it in the state of Illinois.
Without.
Without a license.
Correct.
So technically, those organizations should be going to the county probably.
Well.
Or somewhere, but this would alleviate that part of it, in that we in the village would be responsible for it. But either way, it's going to be a cost to attest to, until you absolutely, I think you wouldn't want to feed because you're going to have to recover the cost of keeping up with it too.
Right. So.
Your Honor, if I may, I could please, I could try to amend it one more time, there's no one that's got a pending license, I believe, or request.
Well, there was, but I, Michelle, did you run it?
In eighteen seventeen, the last board meeting?
Did he pass on it because it was too close to?
He passed. But nothing pending right now.
Rather than a war.
Probably passive for that one situation, right?
We did, because.
What we can do, let me try it one more time, try to incorporate the concerns with the board, you can maybe create licenses too for different, different type of organizations. I can try that. So if it's okay with you.
Just take tables here.
June.
First you do June. Motion to the table by trustee.
Make the motion, thank you.
Second.
Second by Razor. We're on the table, yeah.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Where are you sitting?
Yes.
Yes, I'm thank you.
Yes.
Acts two, Kings nothing, end of first period. Hold on there.
Just stay, just stay.
Pass forward.
Oh, sorry.
Strike that.
Yeah, strike that.
All right, we're ready here. Okay. Letter J, officials report. Trustee Horn, I know that you have the meeting with the chief, the chief of the meeting with the attorney, and hopefully.
Well, if I may, trustee Horn and Chief Sipkar, we've met, Chief Sipkar and myself and trustee Horn had quite a few discussions with the chief. What we're attempting to do is have one master ordinance that codonies penalties provisions. That's almost, it won't be presented that way, that could be presented each separate ordinance because from a technical standpoint, it's almost impossible. So what we'll have is maybe four or five ordinances per board meeting, you're probably looking at twenty ordinances, twenty to twenty-five ordinances. So similar to what we did a few years ago, so next meeting, we'll have at least four ordinances and then we'll keep on proceeding. That's fine.
That being the case. Okay, that's fine. And then, that being the case, I believe the table, trustee Razik's air braking, jet braking, and we'll open that that next meeting, since we already have that. Table.
What?
Um, trustee Razik, I know this was supposed to have been removed, so that's our address. I have a number three, trustee Holston, we have an update on that?
Yes, sir. I've received comments from Ruben and from Chief Sipkar on the input they had. I haven't received any comments from any of the trustees at this point. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Barb to review the Tinley Park program and probably we'll have something at the next board meeting for us to review, not to pass on, but to review. So we're probably a couple of meetings away from having something.
Just with the public, you're not sure, we're referring to the landlord licensing?
Yes, we're referring to the landlord licensing and permitting for both from the point of security and inspection of rental property and definition training, a number of different things. Several good ordinances out there, Tinley Park seems to have the best one, but Ruben particularly had some good suggestions there. So we're going, Barb and I are going to meet tomorrow morning and talk about, try to put something together.
Okay, thank you. And I believe you have a nice topic on your very economic development.
The more I get into economic development, the more I understand what I don't know.
I can relate.
Yeah. Very involved the last few months, excuse me, in a number of different things, and I mentioned earlier, but let me start with a couple of positive things. Will County is number one in the state of Illinois in residential growth, which is a positive thing. Unfortunately, most of that's not in Moni, but still, it's number one in residential growth. There were over a thousand housing starts in Will County last year. Cook County only has six hundred and sixty-five. So there's a lot of positive things in the Will County happening. We also have, as everybody here knows, the Stunkel Road improvement going on not too far from here, lots of discussion about the Iliana. And map twenty-one, which is the federal financing bill for the highway, has passed several of the house committees now, looks like it's on target to be passed in September. If it passes, according to IDOT, that's the last thing they need to be able to proceed other than a couple of court cases that they're working on, probably by the end of this year on the Iliana Highway. And that's going to do a lot of things from an economic development point of view. Mentioned at the last meeting, for those of you that don't know some of the details that I'm aware of, it's all public information on the Michelin facility moving to Wilmington. Let me tell you the positive side, what was in for the village of Wilmington. They got out of that deal, two million dollars to build a brand new police department chief. They got a brand new fire department built on the property by the developer and then given to the city. They got a water tower, a brand new water tower built and then given to the city. Economic development can do a lot of things for you. I don't know all the details, there's probably people in this room that do know details on what happened. I do know that Moni was a finalist along with Crete and along with Wilmington for that, for that new facility. And I also know, and what I'm learning is that part of the issue wasn't Moni, I don't want to put all this on the village of Moni's shoulders. And already getting a contract like this, one point seven million, by the way, is the largest building since two thousand and six in Illinois. So it's quite a project. You have to have a lot of coordination, you have to have not just the village, but the school district, you have to have the township. Just this last week, the mayor interceded on negotiations that are taking place right now, I don't want to steal your thunder, mayor, but interceded on a small project that's being worked on, people who are interested in coming to Moni. But because they couldn't get the information from the township assessor's office, we're holding back. Another organization that I was talking to, a lot of the issue there depended upon school board financing and what kind of relief they could get on that from that point of view. It's not as simple as just the village of Moni, it takes cooperation among all of those. Now fortunately, the village of Moni is a part of the Will County Center for Economic Development. We're a member of that, we pay our dues. I'll be approaching the board probably over the next few months to spend a little more money in that as a matter of fact, because that's the organization that's very involved in bringing business to Will, Will County. That's the organization that was largely responsible for keeping Michelin in Will County. I wish they'd been in Moni, but they are at least in Will County. We need to be more involved in that organization. We need to be more involved in working right now with the school board, with Moni Township and talking about it. I'm a proponent, I'll continue to be a proponent, of Moni having a economic development commission, something that is a part of the village, something that's a part of the chamber, something that's a part of business people in the area that are all interested in economic development, which by the way, is not just business, it's also residential, so that we can begin to put together a plan and begin to plan for the future. The village of Wilmington started working in two thousand and six on this project that they just got. They've been working eight years. It took them eight years to get where they are. If you follow that logic, we've got a long ways to go before we're going to see significant growth. Now, on the other hand, we've got a seven hundred and twenty thousand foot building over at Will Kitchen available today. We will have sometime in late two thousand and fifteen, early two thousand and sixteen, another seven hundred and twenty thousand square foot building available. I believe we've got some other property available, buildings available as well as property. Some people say, well, you're only losing a few jobs. Out of the hundred and ten jobs that will be lost in Moni, only probably fifteen of them are people who live in Moni. But all of them bought food, gas in Moni. All of them spent money, all of them brought revenue. The value of that property is a lot more when it's running than it is when it's empty. The revenue it brings into the village is a lot more when it's full than when it's empty. Otherwise, we wouldn't get excited when somebody new comes to town, would we? So this is an opportunity, there was an article in the paper today that quoted me several different times, the one thing I want to stress is, this is an opportunity for us to work together. We can't point the fingers at previous administrations. We are the current administrations, trustees, mayor, administration. We're the people that have something to do with this. And I think we need to take responsibility right now for being serious about economic development, number one, by working together. Mayor, I read your report, your recon report, I talked with Clerk Hager for a few minutes. I think you had a good trip, but as you pointed out, it was just a start. We have a long ways to go and the first thing is we have to begin to develop a serious plan that says here's what we're going to do. Now, we do have a lot of resources, I've had some good meetings and I appreciate Barbara last week sitting down with me and with Scott Fleming as the vice president for the Will County Center for Economic Development. And we had some good meetings where we discussed different things, incentives and infrastructure dollars that are available, different people that are available, Will County tax abatement that's available, TIFs, helping more to establish more TIFs, enterprise zones, a number of things were put on the table. That was just the first of what I hope will be many different meetings that will be current administration and trustees and mayor, you will be involved in it. We try to work with Will County. Will County is doing a lot of things, improving the growth in our county. That's not to undersell the Chicago Southland group, they're also a group that we're a part of and can be a part of this, but quite frankly, the majority of those people are Cook County people. Will County are Will County people. And those are people who we need to be working with more. That's all I have as a report right now. When we go through the budgeting process, we'll talk more about, again, what I think we need to do there. But I want to encourage us to start thinking about having some type of an economic development commission that's not just village of Moni, not just politically minded, but a group of people that are involved, trustees, business people again, people from possibly the school district, people from the Moni township. We need all of us working together to try to get this part of the county of Will moving in the right direction again.
Okay. Anybody else on your official reports?
Please, actually.
Okay.
And just going back frankly, I would do just made a point on the school board, having, I have been attending many, many school board meetings and public forums, community forums in the last two months, and I'm aware, and I want everybody in this room aware of what's happening with our school district and school board right now. We all recently got our tax bills and you will notice, Crete Monday School District two oh one U is the highest item on our tax bill. They are also on the same budget year that we are, they are ending their fiscal year now. And right now, the entire school board and the entire administration of the school district, that's ten schools, five thousand one hundred and fifty kids within that school district and all of us affected. And we know if we're wanting economic development, the first thing people ask is how's the school district? We have to be concerned right now. There is no superintendent in place, there's one that's trying to be approved in the state of Illinois, he doesn't have the license in the state of Illinois. Two, three assistant superintendents for business affairs, the guy who pays the bills, for student affair, yeah, student affairs who is retiring, and one, one that actually just resigned. We also have an assistant principal at the high school and two other administrators who are leaving. We have three hundred and some teachers affected in this school district, many of them who also live in this school district, who have been working without a contract this entire school year. The school board has now even, they've had to call in a federal mediator because they're unwilling to negotiate about these contracts. And I know I'm, you know, getting on soapbox, telling you I'm sorry, but this is something we all have to be concerned right now about. We have homes for sale, we have young families here, if we don't want any more flights out of these towns, we need to address this school district issue now and we all have to be going to these school boards and call those seven people on the carpet. And they are volunteers, granted, but they were elected to do that job. They are managing a budget of seven volunteers of seventy or nearly seventy million dollars. We have schools in the district who, parts of them are condemned and can't even be habitable. We all have to be concerned about our kids in this district right now. So I encourage all of us to start going to these school board meetings and paying attention when these teachers, or they call home, bless their hearts, they have been working without a contract all year and some great teachers are now finding jobs outside of this district because they'll be able to get a good paying contract elsewhere. So please, all of us, we need to be concerned about that and please stay on top of them because their election year, four of them are coming up next year too. And yes, we do have, because we are within a K through twelve district and we operate under districts, us, for most of us here are in district one, but all seven of them are accountable to all of us here in the town. And if we want to work with that school district and getting, and I can certainly find you people for resources, anything we need for grants and what have you, we certainly have that available for some fabulous programs that that district has in place now, right now in Shands. So be concerned. And just really quickly too, after that, I'll be working with, with Ruben on Kids' Day and Fall Fest on sponsorship and getting people involved too. So be on, be on the lookout for Heidi on the trail for sponsorship. And also thank you again for the recon update. And I just wanted to, I wanted to see kind of a little more, do you have like a list of who else participated from Illinois and maybe the package that we sent or did associated with them? What did we send as a part of our package?
We had, as far as our package goes, we didn't have much, quite frankly, because we didn't have anything to start with.
Right.
So what I presented to you was, the one page was a flyer that we worked with there, there was a whole cut sheet we had available to us. The slides is illustrated in there, you see ours compared to the other towns. The other towns have been doing this for, some of them, several years.
Did you get, had you opportunity like presented or was it rolling?
There's like a total of seventy slides or whatever it was, and it was for all seven communities that were at that one booth. There were other towns that were also there, Matson, if I say it correctly, was like the exile over, they were part of that group, even from county region. They had, we had like a six quadrant, you know, a six booth space combined through the seven communities. Matson had a double space that they were doing of their own. So, you know, depends on where you're at and where you're developed to be and everything. It seemed to work well for them, but we weren't there yet, you know. Doing a co-op was the best we could do.
Oh, I get it, I just, I just wondered if there was like a book of other things.
I will say this, and one of the things that was interesting, Wayne and I, when we were out there, it was interesting because Mike Rose, who's one of the developers in our area here, was very pleased to see us out there. Because frankly, sometimes the developers feel like they're in and alone. We also had the opportunity to meet with one of the realtor, sorry, one of the brokers that deals with, going on Plaza, we had a meeting with that broker and a possible tenant while we're out there. So there was things like that were taking place. And we were told by the broker afterwards, it's great that we had that presence there because when you're trying to convince a potential tenant, franchise, operation, whatever the case may be, it goes a lot further for them to know they have the support of the municipality, not just a broker trying to push a location. And so that, it seems to have its fair way now, if you want to share a little bit about your perspectives on it or you have no idea.
Well, the booth that we had, like the mayor was saying, we shared with University Park, Park Forest, Richmond Park, South Holland, Canada Park, and who is this?
Wolfy Fields.
Wolfy Fields. And our presentation, we showed our traffic volume of fifty-seven, we showed our traffic volume coming through the village, we showed that we have commuter electric line that that ends in the town next to us, they have to come through us for shopping power, that's a positive thing, four-year university with student housing on campus now. So we looked really good and the graphics, quite honestly, we had done the best there, best we saw. I'm a veteran of these types of events and the mayor and I found out after the first day that we probably shouldn't be in the booth. There was some conflict of interest when we were talking to people and sometimes you're giving away trade secrets or needs, wants and desires. So the mayor and I decided to abandon, so to speak, we had flyers and so forth in the booth and the rolling presentation was doing the job for us. But we're in a building the size, two or three times the size of a quarter, it's thirty five, thirty-four thousand people, something like that there. You have to be on roller skates to keep up with this. I myself am a tier four food representatives that I initially targeted, so we've got some warm fuzzies there. The dealings are done with brokers, not with the food companies, but the attorneys and the brokers, so we've made a lot of progress and we're now emailing and conversating with these people. Is anything definitely going to happen? I think we made a good start.
It just, it was such a big facility, Wayne and I had shins bones each night from just walking.
And the next, and the next event like this, there really should be three people going, two to rotate and one in the booth.
Well, and it's interesting you say food brokers because, again, I attended last week the ground opening in Wilmington of the new BSNF rail code center there. They're now able to take groceries from California and get them here in two days to
They're now able to take groceries from California and get it here in two days to Wilmington.
Sure.
And farmers in the Will County area, which does include Moni, can take cattle and other products that we manufacture here, and have them in California in two days. And that means at some point in time, somebody's gonna want to have some type of factories here to be able to develop when it gets here, to do something with it. And again, that's where Moni has to start working today for something we may not see the fruition of for five, 10 years.
I will say, it was kind of interesting, because we all want a grocery store, and everybody wants to say, what's the staffs, what's the staffs, and I'm all like, what is the staffs? It was interesting, because of all the interactions we've had, you know, locally and everything else, it was interesting while we're out there to interact with a few folks, and Wayne made some good connections as well, and, but, a lot of them didn't actually have the, the desirable stores, didn't necessarily have space there. I'm trying to make sure I guard my words, how I say this. You know, like Whole Foods didn't have a place there, Trader Joe's didn't have a place there, but they were having needs, you know, things like that were going on. But the only store that actually had a space there, I believe, was Safeway?
Kroger, Safeway.
But did they actually have a booth, when you ran into those guys, they were, anyhow, so, a lot of the stores, they're looking at the marketplace right now, they're consuming the Dominique's fallout, so they're focused on existing markets that they can just simply take over. So, that's where a lot of the focus is at in the Chicago metro area. But if you talk to, I think it's Hainan, Ohio, that's been opening a few stores in the Chicago area, a lot of these stores, you know, they're looking for 100, 120,000 dollars median household income, we're still right around 75, 80,000. But it was kind of interesting, because we thought, you know what, Safeway, Safeway was right, wasn't it? So, we decided, well, let's go talk to Safeway, just see what their perspective on life is and all this kind of thing. We go over there then and said, nah, you guys make too much money. They, you know, they actually said, we can't post a store in your town, you know, we don't want to go anywhere that's outside of 45, 50,000 dollars median household income, you're in the right market force. So, we're listening to Hainan, we're listening to Holman, and that's just based on them only looking at numbers. We talked to a couple of restaurants. It's interesting, because in the monorail on the way to and from the location, we had the opportunity to interact with developers from Florida or California that aren't interested in the Chicago area, where we could expose ourselves to ask the right questions and learn a little bit more about what the industry insider perspectives are on some things, and it was, it was enlightening.
Well, I think too, that the other villages, there's a meeting next week to go over the thoughts and what was accomplished, and what could be done better, but I think I tend to agree with you, overall consideration that has a group of seven villages, when you post your numbers, your statistics, your median income, your traffic, we become like the second-largest geographical metropolitan area, or a long ways around, so it's a great bargaining tool.
And while we're, and over half of those were from Cook County, but we got the benefit of being solely Will County, we were the only one that was solely Will County. University Park was there, they have a little bit of Cook County, but we had the benefit of the way we presented it. And it was, it was, it was good to be there, it's good to identify what steps we need to take.
So, where do you get the grocery store?
Yeah, all I asked was...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know, I don't want to know other than that.
All I asked.
So, no, we don't have a grocery store.
And then I just wanted to, I wondered by next meeting also, can we get an update on the Comcast, give like cabling projects?
The South River Fiber Network.
Yeah.
Sure. I know they have a fiber to our building here, but I don't believe, DJ, it's not been lit up yet, so.
Well, I can assure you, it's not been lit up. Our, our connectivity at home stinks still.
Well, this has nothing to do with service to the residents. This has to do with the fact that there's a fiber network brought into Moni, where the Southern tip, the South River, the fiber network, there's a 4A in our community, development potential for commercial purposes that would allow us up to a bit of internet speeds.
For business.
For business.
So, I'm just curious on that, I know it was supposed to be done probably by last November.
Yeah, I'm not sure what to say.
Yeah, that's, that'll be found out.
It's done installed in the building, it's just a matter of the network timings that they have to go all the way back to the source.
I know they ran into some hurdles that they're running to, and they had to cross railroads, and a few things going north to the ultimate connection for the north, and that's even when we have things going across our railroad here, it's elevated, it's separated and all that, but there's major hurdles I have to deal with and all of those stuff.
So, I just wonder, maybe we can find out by next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Completely unrelated, but I know we're gonna start getting questions from the trustees. Mosquito spraying?
Does that refer to me?
I don't think mosquito's all about that.
That wasn't a report that I was gonna give this board meeting, I have one for you next meeting, but yes, I attended the Will County gathering of mosquito abatement districts all over, and we are getting supplies that are going to be mostly free, as far as the spraying goes, once the, this field count gets a little higher in our tracks, we'll start effectively spraying, and I'll have to report to the next board meeting for that.
Fair enough.
Okay. Anything else for the officials? I believe there's nothing on the business, open the public non-agenda items, please don't get your comments in three minutes, come to the podium, give your name and address. Give up? Okay. And we're going to executive session, problems we have, I already gave the typical reason to give to executive session, as far as that, okay. Opened enough, we have any questions, okay. All right. Now, that being the case, how are you seeing a motion adjourned, and watch the Hawks, maybe watch it? Sorry, is that Horn?
Yeah.
Sorry, second.
Okay.
Great. Brokaw?
Just the horn, yes, file.
Yes.
Yes.
And Ross?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.